We have one right here.
Possible, sure. Okay, it's six o'clock. I'd like to call the Tusker Township Planning Commission meeting to order. Roll call, Kelly Ashford.
Here.
Jane McGinnis, here. Mike Cherviny, here. Lisa Schofield, here. John Shams, here. And Dawn Webb, here.
Oh, here.
Okay. This is for Kevin.
Oh, thank you.
Board comments on the agenda? Any comments?
Yeah.
Yeah. I think we want to, don't you want to flip the bylaws?
You got it already flipped.
Oh, yeah.
You flipped it already for me. Must have been when you were at McDonald's.
So is everybody's, because I think I had two copies.
Have the bylaws after the.
Okay. Have the meeting minutes and then the bylaws?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, yeah. Okay, any public comments on our agenda? Yes, sir.
There is no public comment at the end of the agenda.
Yeah.
Oh, that's in there. Thank you. I'll put that on there. That's a good public comment. So that goes out of board comments. So public comments goes behind the review of master plan, chapter four and so on. If there is no public comments on the agenda, everyone's had a chance hopefully to review the minutes from June 1st. We have any issues or additions or corrections to the agenda or to the minutes?
Nope. Well, I kind of do and I kind of don't. We said at the meeting, and it's in the minutes, that we were going to review chapter five and go through six again, and we do not have chapter five yet, so that was a mistake we made at the meeting.
Yeah, but that wasn't a mistake at the meeting. We were planning to have chapter five.
Well, we thought we had chapter five, I think, didn't we?
Well, I thought if we didn't have it, we would get it, but apparently we didn't get it, so.
No, we did not get it, so attached to your minutes is a copy of the email from Diane, Denise Fine, saying that chapter five is not done yet.
So do we want to correct the minutes or just attach that to the?
Just make an attachment.
I can just leave it.
Okay. Okay. Any more discussion? Do we have a motion to approve the minutes from June 1st?
I'll need a motion.
Second?
I'll second it.
Lisa, second it. Okay.
It'd be.
All right, all in favor?
All right.
Aye, opposed. Okay. So we approve the minutes? Okay, the next item on the agenda is the bylaws that we put together, I think, back in January, and we had, I think that we had the word "will prepare" to capital improvement program back then, and then, I think it was maybe March or April, we had a discussion and because the board has the ability to change it to whoever they want to do the capital improvement, we put the word "may". But in order to be consistent with the law from 2008 and the ordinance 40 that we submitted to the board, the word should be "shall prepare a capital improvement program", and I think the board is, the township board is acceptable with the word "shall" because that's what the law from 2008 said, and that's what our ordinance 40 says, so I'd like to make a motion that under bylaws number F.
We have to get a second.
We change it to say "shall prepare a capital improvement program".
I'll second that.
Okay. All in favor?
No, can we discuss first?
Well, yes, we can discuss it.
Okay, so I attached to the bylaws, the second page is the law, the excerpt from the law. The reason we chose "may", and I'm not opposed to changing it to "shall", but I would prefer that we put the whole entire sentence that's in the law, because the law says, it says "to further the desirable future development of the local unit of government under the master plan, a planning commission after adoption of the master plan shall annually prepare a capital improvements plan or program of public structures and improvements unless the planning commission is exempted from this requirement by charter or otherwise. If the commission is exempted, the legislative body shall either prepare and adopt a capital improvements program separate from or as part of the annual budget, or shall delegate the preparation of a capital improvements program to the chief elected official or non-elected administrative official, subject to final approval by the legislative body", which is why we put "may" in, because the law says we can be exempt. And then, that same, in section 11 of the draft ordinance, which is your third page, that same paragraph is in the ordinance, because that's what MPA has in their ordinance.
So.
So we can change it to "shall", but I think we should have the whole sentence.
So if we change it to "shall", we would put section 11 in our bylaws, which reflects the.
Would be the same, yeah.
Yeah, it would be the same as what the law said.
Yep.
And that's, again, that says "we shall prepare or caused to prepare by the Township Planning Commission", and just show what the law says.
Yeah, so if we just, if we want to change it.
Well, I don't know if we need to go that far, but if, you know.
It's a copy and paste.
If you guys feel we need to do that, then that's.
If we're going to make a change, I think we should have put the exact word in what the public law said we should do.
And then all three documents are consistent.
Okay. I mean, it's, do we have any more discussion on that? Do we want to just change number F to reflect section 11 of our ordinance that says the Township Board doesn't a capital improvement plan to the planning commission? The "further the desirable future development of the township under the master plan", Township Board to further, after the master plan is adopted, shall prepare or caused to be prepared, prepared by the Township Planning Commission or by designated non-elected administrative official, the capital improvement plan on public structures improvement, showing those structures and improvements in a general order, their priority for the following six year period. Prepared capital improvement program is prepared by someone other than the Township Board shall be, if, I think that's what it means, the prepared capital improvement plan, if prepared by someone other than the Township Board, shall be subject to final approval by the Township Board. The planning commission may be exempted from preparing a capital improvement plan, but that's up to the Township Board, and that's what we tried to say before.
Yeah, that's what we tried to say to begin with.
That we shall prepare unless the Township Board wants us.
Exempt us, yeah.
Wants to exempt us, and that's up to them. I mean, we.
So in section 11, you're just going to copy and paste the actual.
Yeah, I would just copy and paste it.
The actual language.
Yeah.
From the law.
Do we have to withdraw the original motion, make a new motion to put a distance? Am I in the motion? Overrun the motion?
I did.
That's okay.
Do you want to amend the motion to include section 11 of the ordinance and what reflects what's in the, the law?
Under it.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, so make a motion that we amend the bylaws, section F, to reflect the section 11 of the ordinance 40, which mirrors the law of 2008.
So you're making a motion like I'll second it?
All in favor?
All in.
Okay. Is there an issue with that, do you think? Okay. I know, I've been going back and forth with Bob, and he said, "Put 'shall' in there", which means we're doing, so I just want to make sure we're all on the same page here, that we are going to do it unless you guys decide against it.
That's a good plan, okay.
Okay.
We're good, we're done.
Good. Thank you, let's go.
Bye.
Yeah, okay. All right, so the next item on the agenda is reviewing the master plan. Do we want to start with chapter six that we were rushed through because we thought there was a meeting for maps, or do we want to go back and start with chapter, or chapter four, which is the natural resources?
Four is probably the easiest one, isn't it?
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Do you have a copy?
I have a copy of four.
Do you have a copy of six, too?
Um.
Can I have an extra if you?
I know.
I got a partial copy of six.
She has it up right there on her computer, so.
Could I have an extra if you want?
Oh, sure. Yeah, if you want to.
Okay.
Do you have a musical?
Well, I think that's the sort of.
All right, so.
I think she fixed everything from what we talked about.
Chapter four, which we were given a few weeks ago, and we wanted to get through chapter six because that was the goals and objectives, and that was the most important thing, so we had the manager, Doug, from MCA there, to answer our questions a couple weeks ago. So to me, chapter four is basically boilerplate stuff that we have in there. It talks about the position we're in for climate, it goes our average temperatures, the geology, has a picture of the surface geology of Tusker Township on the second page. If you guys see anything that you want to stop and talk about, but I don't see anything. It talks about the topography. Come to me. Topography of the township.
Topography.
Topography, thank you, thank you. And talks about our elevation, it talks about soils. I think that's, yeah, is that a typo? Looks like two Ls under soils.
It's a lot, Ellen.
That's not, shouldn't be, shouldn't be soils. See that, Dawn? It says S-O-L-L-S, it should be S-O-I-L-S, so they need to correct.
Uh, which, how much picture?
We're on page four, three, dash three.
Under where it says soils and farmland.
Yeah. Like that says, couldn't that look like two Ls?
Yeah.
It's just a bigger I.
Oh, okay. It's probably okay. That's all right.
The soils.
Yeah, you're right. So now it's correct.
That's fine. So do everybody have any issues with four dash three about the soils and farmland? Basically, it's just boilerplate stuff they probably took off the internet. And it has the map, the topographical map that we have, and as far as those elevations and the rivers and streams and lakes, which to me is a no-brainer. And it talks about septic limitations. A lot of red stuff in there.
I just had one thing, and you guys will know better than, does the Maple River extend all the way to Burt Lake?
Yes.
Okay. On the map, on page four dash seven, they have the Maple River, like, starting not at Burt Lake. They need to extend the, I noticed that when I was looking at the map. It's just a small thing, but, like, it's starting, like, in the middle of land instead of starting at the lake.
I see.
Like, they need to extend the river all the way to Burt Lake.
Okay.
If somebody could mention that to them.
Yeah, it comes in, you know, just a little north of, of Crooked River.
They just need to draw the line.
They need to draw the line, too.
Yeah, draw a little farther in there.
Yeah, it just looks strange to me, and.
It just stops.
It just stops out there.
Okay, so we'll go back to four dash five, the septic limitations.
That's good evidence for why we need to have maybe a septic resolution.
Yeah.
For permits and inspections and anything for septic.
So I'm not sure if this came from the tip of the met or how they came up with this information.
Well.
They resourced, huh?
I think we asked, I got her card, there was a tip of, the tip of the met.
Tip of the met, right.
That was at the BLPA meeting.
Right.
To give us updated information.
Okay.
And this because it was, was it highlighted?
Yeah, because they just did the survey.
Yeah.
Around the lake, and it's, anybody who lives on the lake or, or on the canals or the river, it's out there.
As soon as they figure out who we're supposed to send this stuff to, because I don't know if, it doesn't go to Denise anymore, I think it goes to Nico, I don't have contact information for him.
Okay. I wonder if Denise would give us that information.
Yeah, I'm sure she would.
Okay. But this is the updated septic information that we got, because they took a survey around the lake.
This is 2009.
Yeah.
Oh, this is an old one, huh?
Yeah, this just says August 2009, the map that they, maybe they have a new one and they have not.
So, Dawn, do you think?
Yeah, I have the card from the gal that was at the meeting.
Yeah, but I wonder if they sent it to NEMCA or we should get it from NEMCA.
No, I gotta get them the information.
Okay, so you'll.
I just need to figure out.
Okay.
How to hold them, Nico.
Okay, you'll do that. Okay, so this is to be determined, updated to the current survey, because that's out there on the website. It's got, they'll give you a code, if you live on the lake or on the river, they'll give you a code so you can look up your property. They did that about 10, 12 years ago, the guy went around with a canoe. Remember that? And even went up my canal and found that they didn't have green space all the way across my canal, but they, they do a pretty good job, so it's out there, and they sent information out to most people to look at if you live on the lake, so, okay. So you're going to follow through with that?
Can I make one comment?
Sure.
Just a compliment to NEMCA or whoever put this together. On the old version, the average temperature, temperature listed at 55 degrees for this area, which is pretty high, they did correct it back to the 43, which is pretty, so they actually did read the information.
Oh, they did?
Yeah.
Okay. So which page are you on now?
Four one.
Oh, the first page?
Yeah. I had to get that.
Jumping around, huh? Okay. All right, so the next page is water resources, and it talks about the most valuable natural resource in our township is water. We're located within the Sheboygan River watershed, and they got a map of the watershed. I think on this map, it shows the Crooked, or the Maple River going into the.
It does.
Looks like it's going into the lake over there.
I can't even see the Maple River.
No, I don't think it. On page four, six?
Yeah. Well, I think four, four.
The Maple River.
Four, six.
Yeah, they don't have Maple River. They show it, but they don't have a label.
They don't have a label, but it's there, because the Crooked River is in red, because that's the inland waterway.
Because this is just showing the inland waterway, so that's why they.
Yeah, but there is, there is a, this map does show a river going into.
The inland waterway, it doesn't, the Maple River.
No, 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 but it's a map.
He's just talking about the map.
The map shows the Crooked River, but it has the Maple River going into Burt Lake in this map, but it doesn't label it, so.
Yeah, one does, one doesn't. It quits.
Because this, you're talking about this? Is that what we're talking about?
Maple River is.
Yeah, but they're talking about this, this is the inland waterway.
Yeah, that's part of Maple River.
No.
Why not?
Because you can't go into it, not below.
There's a gap, Maple River?
No.
No, you can't.
You can't, no.
You're flat tuna, can't go.
It's just showing the connectivity.
All right, let's.
Maybe a canoe.
Let's go, let's move on.
You look like being.
Yeah, well, okay, you take your time.
No, no, no.
Why not?
All right. So it just goes through, you know, the Sturgeon River begins in Oscego County, flows north of Burt Lake, and talks about Burt Lake and Indian River connection, so just information on the inland waterway. Groundwater, important factors of elevation of the groundwater, or the quality, quantity and quality of the water. Township provides resident with sufficient water quantities, water availability will not likely be a factor limiting growth. And I think, I'm sure they pulled that off of some. It goes back to the wells and septic system, chapter three. It talks about Burt Lake, covers 25% of the township. Let's talk about mullet. Is a mullet part of our, is a mullet part of our township?
Part of it.
Grandview Beach, right?
I've never seen it, too.
Is it, I don't see it in it.
If you go to page four thirteen, reference is mullet, huh?
Is it?
It talks about the fisheries and, and.
This is rather known.
Yeah. Yeah, but doesn't, maybe it doesn't touch mullet, but I think people live on Grandview Beach or in our.
Well, this part of the township.
Yeah, touches, because I know back in, a few years ago, they had the issue on Grandview Beach, and that was part of our township. Okay. I like the fact that says, "Burt Lake Preservation Association is an active organization of interested citizens and property owners. Their mission to preserve and improve the quality of Burt Lake and its waterships for future generations." Okay. So they're giving us a plug, Jane. So does anybody have any issues or any changes they want to send back to them on that page?
This is the page where I also contacted them to see if they had updated information.
Four dash eight, where it's in yellow.
Right, but actually, if you look at the current survey, if I pull up on their website, they're using these exact same graphs, the same dates.
Oh, they are?
For this, yeah.
So I wonder if they should say through 2022?
They didn't change them on their, on their survey. Well, I think.
They were just.
Yes, it says we're not really been able to locate this data, does the LPA have updated data, so the answer's yeah.
Yeah, they were just left there.
Yeah.
Well, basically, it's not us, it's through, not Burt Lake, but it's through the tip of the met.
It's through tip of the met, yeah.
I think if we just send them the link to their survey.
Yeah.
And they can pull whatever information they want from that.
Can we do that? Can we do that? Can we send, you're talking about the survey.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
I have the link.
Okay.
And the thing is, if you, if you go to their website directly, and it has surveys, the only one that it shows on the survey for Burt Lake is the old one.
Yeah.
And when you click on it, it comes up with the old one, but the link that they provided at the BLPA meeting.
Yeah.
That takes you right to the new survey, so they've got an issue on the website.
So they need to update this page to the new survey, if it's, if there's any changes or at least the dates.
Right.
They should look at.
NEMCA can look at the survey and decide what.
Right.
What they need to pull from it.
Okay.
So really, we could have it up through 2022 for all this phosphorus.
Right, that's when they took the survey last year. They went around the whole lake, lot by lot, and then looked at all the cadaver that's being drained in the lake from septic tanks.
So we want to get our graph.
Mr. Smith.
As the most.
Right. Yes. So we're going to send that back to them.
That's all, it's good.
Okay. So also, the next page is, that's got the same information, needs to be updated. So the next part is wetlands and woodlands. And I'm not sure when this has been updated.
The maps say 2010.
Yeah, that's in the last, that's in the last master plan, they did.
But they just took that information and used the same map.
So I don't know if they got enough.
That and the other thing is it's on the forest types and the green space cover. If we're going to clear cut at the airport, I think I read on the quote, like, 50 to 60 acres, that needs to be updated because that's included in here.
So what, this is from 2010, huh?
Yeah, I know, so it's, you can't use that data.
No, you can't use it. I would think they would have updated.
For the forestry, anyway. Not, not for the, for the wetlands and the watershed map, I feel like, that's okay, but the forestry would definitely need to be looked at.
Well, what would you change it to? If they clear cut, that's still.
Well, they color, they color code it, so.
Yeah, but it's still.
It would be.
The, you know, woodlands, whether they clear cut or not, there's still going to be growth coming back up in it.
That's the whole point of mine, is.
Yeah, but there's.
It lists the type of. They list the trees that are in there, so it would probably turn into aspen as the new growth came out. It's usually what I.
So right now, it's showing hardwoods, it's showing lowland coppers.
Mike, can I interject?
Sure, go ahead.
I just left the meeting with Greg before, so you're at the airport at five. The plan is, the current contract that's signed says, "Leaving any oak that are 12 inches or smaller, leaving any other tree that's five inches or smaller." So clear cut, clear cuts at one end of the spectrum, selective cut, meaning take this tree and that tree and that tree, that's at the other end of the spectrum, we're kind of in the middle. So it's really not going to be a clear cut, because there are going to be a lot of trees left, but, I mean, there's a lot of timber, a lot of lumber coming down, too, without a doubt.
But you still call it select coverage.
But, well, it's kind of in between, like I said, but it's not, absolutely not going to be a clear cut.
But would we change the map to?
So they would, they would change the map, then if they're leaving mostly hardwoods.
But you wouldn't know until they're done.
He just said oaks, he said they're leaving oaks.
Oaks 12 inches or smaller, and everything else five inches or smaller. So that's still a lot of trees.
But they're not going to look.
That bad, it's not.
It says, yeah, so the area is showing, it's right here, is showing.
Some of that.
Basically, what they want to do is there's some of that canopy out, so we can get some new growth in there.
Right.
Because the undergrowth is dying out, and we're not getting new trees, because it's too heavy of a canopy. So we're going to sell some of that timber, make sure that we can cut us some of that canopy out, because still, it's on forestry.
I, I agree. Would we want to nitpick and start picking apart, saying some of you, I think we should just leave it?
I think not, if they're going to.
No, I would leave it the way it is.
They're doing select.
It's still forestry and.
If they were doing what they did behind Maple Garden, I'd have a different opinion.
Okay. Okay. Thank you for the update there. So we leave that alone. Everything else, I think, probably hasn't changed. Just like along 68 there, you know, they're only picking and choosing some of those trees.
Selective, clear cut.
Yeah, so I don't, that's still not enough to change all this stuff. Okay. Okay, let's. The next page is fish and wildlife resources. It talks about our fish, Lake Huron Fisheries, it talks about the Fishery Management Division, DNR, MDNR. It just talks about, you know, who, you know, talks about when it was started back in 2019, Lake Huron Fish, it's like a history, I guess. I don't know if we need to want to get involved with that or not. I wonder if anything's different, though. It talks about, "Burt Lake has historically been managed under the MDNR Large Lake Program from 2000 until 2000", okay. It is updated, 2019.
When did the DNR change their name?
DQ, DNR has still been the DNR, I mean, they're the ones over the land and everything, but the DQ is the, for the environment.
They combined at one time, and then they went back.
Way back when, yeah, yeah. But this, this is.
Every couple of years, they change it, huh?
This talks about the MDNR, you know, as far as the lake and fisheries, they're the ones in charge of the fish. It talks about whitefish were stocked purely in 1876, blah, blah, blah. Yellow perch.
Or the big fish. I don't see the big fish.
That's showing them.
You didn't?
It's walleye. They say walleye is the most abundant predator, but a lot of people didn't catch many walleyes last year.
Five per acre.
So, but again, it's just, this whole thing is more information type stuff, that it really isn't going to change anything we want to do in the future or goals. Information type stuff, but it really isn't going to change anything we want to do in the future, or goals.
Good information on the end of that page about the invasive species. They get through Burt Lake and Malt Lake, and Malt Lake, and then there's a check.
All this one here?
Invasive species, and it talks about a lot of different vegetation and animals that are invasive in our area.
Yeah, it talks about eagle, that's what.
Good information.
Our environment is eagle now, not DQ, they used to call it DQ, but it's called eagle, so, okay. All right. Then it gives you the invasive species list. Goes through birds, gestations, diseases. Each leaf. And the threats.
I wonder why they don't have anything in there about. And the diseases, why they don't have, maybe it's the under, oh, never mind, it's under insects, the emerald ashmore.
So anything else on that page? Page of species list, then they got a list on the next page, in Boygan County Threatened and Dangerous Species. I don't know what a dusted skipper is. I assume it is, blight flip crater. I'm assuming they did their homework on this stuff, so, there's quite a few pages in this.
That's where we gave them the.
That's right, so, okay. So now we're down to. Four seventeen. Scenic features, talks about the dynamic year-round views of Burt Lake from along the shorelines. Another important asset to Tuscaraway Township development, which occurs near Burt Lake shoreline area. Visible by very, many property owners and boaters on the lake. Given consideration impact to development, a water quality impact to development, visual quality should be considered. And it goes through all the panoramic views and company's features. Talks about the Natural Resources Environment Protection Act of nineteen ninety-four. One thing, I'm, I was looking at this today, table four four. It talks about Tuscaraway Township contamination sites. And that surprises me, but I don't know what, who put that together, was it the health department or?
Well, the bottom of that table says environment, Great Lakes and Energy. So I'd say that it's.
Yeah, eagle, yeah.
Department of Environment, Great Lakes and Energy.
Yeah, because they got.
The remediation and redevelopment division is, that would be the one where that information is coming from, from the state of Michigan.
But what is that, it says contamination sites, is that something they're cleaning up, do they cite these people?
Well, they're, they've identified those sites, and that's what those site ID numbers are, you could look those up.
Okay.
Online, and then you'll be able to find what the specific problems are at each one of those locations.
What, it shows Burger King on Club Road, and then it just has thirty-four seventy-one Club Road, what is that?
Says that's a contamination site. Is that your house, Kyle?
No, and it's either, and this is what Jane Keller says, correct, looking up, you also call Lady Dumb and Gaylor, Kenzie Arson. Burger King one of them researched, and that's been there for more than twenty-five years.
Really, I wondered, yeah.
Yeah, it was, I think, one, and I'm not sure if that was a station type thing, or if it was. Some reason, like, some kind of a train or a lumber thing, too, like a Creosote type thing.
So I remember when the Burger King was going in there, they had, they had issues, because I know the guy owned it back then, you're right, it's been a long time.
And that's what it's related to.
So I wonder if these have been updated or what, I mean, they got Jack's Auto Repair on here, too.
That hasn't been there forever.
But the land is still contaminated.
Well, once they identify it as a contaminated site, it never, it will never not be a contaminated site.
Right.
Even if the remediation was done, it's still going to identify it.
Okay, so there's no really.
On some of them, there's risks are present and they're immediate.
But that might be there.
Risk is not determined, so.
And then the last one, Jack's, Jack Auto Repair, that one says risk controlled interim.
There might be oil and stuff.
So it was Jack's Auto Repair, the one that is right across the street from me?
Yes.
Yeah.
Because they had, they had a monitoring well system through there, they ran, they, they were pumping and cleaning continuously. Out of a trailer that was sitting there for quite a few years, and they actually, they got it to where they wanted it, they've removed the, the trailer, and they've capped the well. That they were using, and that's all, they've, they've finished the remediation process.
I just wonder if that's a question we should get back to them and say, is this something that, it needs to be, you know, are they've been resolved? Or is this something that stays there forever?
Well, it sounds like, based on what I'm reading, it sounds like, like the Jack Auto Repair, it says risk, risks controlled dash interim. So it sounds to me that it's, it's under, it's under control.
But didn't you say it goes on forever, once it gets?
Well, pretty much, I mean, there's, there's monitoring wells in, in my yard that are, to monitor what goes on across the street. They can come in and test it however often they want to. And I'm sure on their property, there's monitoring wells, and they're out, out in the middle of the road there, too, where the road construction was done.
I've been here for twenty years, full-time, and thirty years, at Vincent Services, isn't that where the glow is?
Yes.
They used to be a gas station forty years ago or something, so.
I'm assuming that they, that they don't ever update the.
Yeah, you mean Vincent Services?
Well, when, when.
They used to work there.
Did you?
Making service that long ago.
So maybe that's a.
Self-serve.
Maybe that's a NEMCA question, does, is this table something that we want to make sure that there's more updates?
Yeah, do we need to update it?
Because when Vincent's turned into the glow, we had test wells drilled there, because we had kids involved, and want to make sure when we bought it.
That's right, you were in there.
That it wasn't contaminated or had any chance of contaminating.
I guess the question should be, should, should this be updated, or does it stay forever, I guess, with the NEMCA?
Because it doesn't give a date on here of when this was updated or even tabulated. So that would, that would be my question.
Because they got the place on Birchfield Road, where's Birchfield Road?
It's in town here, the, I think that's the corner where the pharmacy.
That transmission place, I think, is what they're talking about.
Oh, way down south, okay. So it could have been, one time they had an issue, and it's ongoing modern, I guess. But we need to, yeah, we need to clarify that, yeah, that's, we don't need to stay on that, okay. Okay, the last page. There are NPDES permits. National Pollution Discharge Elimination Systems Permit. Control direct discharge into the surface waters of the state of opposing blue and lemons of.
This is updated, it's up to April twenty twenty-three, they're not active.
Can we go back?
Yeah, go ahead.
Before we go off the last subject, on the top of page four eighteen, it says river trading post, but there's no IDs or, what's it talking about? Should that be in there or not be in there?
That's from the previous page, number six, it just got cut off and, and moved. So where it says Alpena Oil, Indiana.
River trading.
River.
Okay.
Trading was just part of them.
I used to be, that was a gas station, too, and then Burt Lake Marina, that's where they have gas, too, so they made, most of those apparently had oil and gas in them, so. Okay, so, Surface Water and Air Discharge Permits, it just says that the program regulates pollutants discharge directly in the waterways from wastewater sources. April two thousand twenty-three, there was nine active NPDES permits issued in Tuscaraway Township. Okay, Air Discharge Permits. State of Michigan for Air Discharge, Discharges Maximum Achievable Control Technology determines nation new source review. Asset Rain Permits, Clean Air Act. Again, we had no permits issued. And this township has a vehicle for air quality.
So we have nine of the other.
Just nine, up here, yeah, up here. Yeah, we have nine on the water. Yeah, they got permits, but, yeah, that's what it says, so.
So they're discharging ended water.
Yeah, but they got permits to do that, so, they're legal, apparently, according to the National Pollution Discharge Elimination System Permit, so. Okay. Anything else on chapter four, we need to go back, I think we got a couple notes, so we have to go back and get updated from the NEMCA. Okay. Okay. Are we ready to go on and kind of go back and look at chapter six again, I know towards the end, we kind of rushed through it, so, do we want to start from the beginning? Or do you have questions from the beginning, or just go through the last few pages? I know we were trying to get some comments on citizens' comments, so, we rushed through, and I know.
I have one comment on page six one, it's one of those Mickey Mall changes I always come up with.
To you, John.
But on the general appearance of the township, we should say seventy percent are satisfied, rather than seventy are satisfied. Go down, we're, I'm going to get to fifty.
Oh, this was a survey?
Yeah.
Seventy percent?
Yeah, where it reads only seventy people were satisfied. It's all add percent after seven.
Where does it add, first?
Fifty-six, go to the fifty-six percent line. Page six one.
Yeah, I'm looking at it, I missed it.
The.
Fifty-six percent are satisfied, oh, seventy.
Yeah, that says seventy.
Seventy are satisfied, he says seventy percent.
Seventy percent are satisfied, okay, that's, that sounds more. We'll need to update that when we send it back, we, we haven't sent chapter six back to them, have we?
No.
Okay. So that's only change on that, that seventy percent of the people that took the survey are satisfied with the general appearance of the township, so, I think that's.
Fifty-six with the township. Seventy percent. Seventy percent are happy with their neighborhood.
Oh, the neighborhood, oh, yeah, okay.
Fifty-six percent.
Okay, fifty-six, okay, just change this seventy to seventy percent on the neighborhood, I got you.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. I'm my interpreter. Okay. All right. All right, so.
Do DOD background.
So do we need to go back to over there, the, the beginning?
Where do we stop?
Well, there was the last couple of sections, I know. Bob was in there too, helping us, trying to decide who does stuff, especially with the. The longer the tourist bureau or the chamber was going to be involved, so, we put in the DDA, we wanted to make sure that's still a viable thing on some of these things that we have. Do you have some? I know the first, you know, pages we went through, I thought pretty thoroughly, but I forget some things gone, and you think we need to go back and revisit. Like designing Indian River as a walk-friendly community, we put future, and we got parks DDA and. Township Board, I think that's what we put on there. Anything that includes the Township Board, Mr. Kramer was here to go through with this, so. You guys see anything? I guess. Well, we went through the whole thing, but the last two pages, we can't, last two pages, I think, is what I think we need to look at.
So the natural resources or the recre, the recreation?
Which page are you on?
There's a section on agriculture and forestry, when you pull it back and read it down.
Which page was that?
That's on page.
Dash fifteen.
As we put the Parks Commission, DNR, and look at economical feasibility, options to continue agriculture and forestry use of land. It's nothing that we do here, other than maybe the Parks Commission get involved. Do we need to look at that again, I think we're pretty much, it's a county Parks Commission.
And the thing about solar facilities, we took that out.
Which one? Yeah, that was one she had in there, we took out number four on page six dash fifteen, done.
I, I put, I had county planning and zoning.
I had it too, I had.
I had the, it's ongoing, and we leave it with county planning and zoning, I mean, most of those.
Well, yeah, they would be the county commissioners, too.
Yeah, so number one, we had planning commission, two, three, four, five, we had county.
Right.
And then six, we had the.
DNR.
And seven, we had planning commission and county.
Yeah, county planning commission, yeah.
So you're saying, do we want to take it out?
I wouldn't, I wouldn't take it out.
Yeah, I think I'd leave it in there, just leave it with county, we're not.
Yeah, no, I would just leave it as county, they do all the zoning. Work with the county for a greater zoning flexibility regarding use of large parcel lands, and that's, that's the county, and we're just an advisory board to them. On recreation. I had some blanks on mine, but I don't know if we filled all those in or not.
So one, two, three, four.
We had planning commission board, right?
No, I had parks.
Parks Commission, okay.
Yep, I had parks for one, two, three, four.
Yeah, that would be parks.
Did we answer the question on number two, did this occur?
What, oh.
That's the Parks Commission. We just said ongoing.
Marina Park as designated trailhead, that's done. It's saying the establishment of Marina Park as a designated.
Trailhead, that's where the trailhead is.
Yeah. So we might just put done in there then, okay, that was one we pushed through, I guess. Okay, so number four, we got Parks Commission, expand township parks and facilities, that's ongoing. I don't know, work cooperatively, we just left that blank, number five, work cooperatively with neighboring townships, county, and other stakeholders, establishing connecting bike trails. Routes such as in between the North Central State Trail and north.
I have, I have parks.
Parks?
Yeah, that makes sense.
Okay. Okay, the next one, promote winter tourism. Okay, the next one, promote winter tourism in the area, including snowmobiling, ex-country skiing, and snowshoeing, and ice fishing.
And we had, I had TBD.
Yeah, that's what we did with the rest of them too. Did you get that letter from the?
I think that's, that probably is like the tourist and the chamber.
Chamber is not.
Well, right now, it's kind of, everything's up in the air between them. And so that's why we put TBD and talked about maybe the DDA, but at this point.
But it's not really.
No, it's not.
Township responsible.
No, 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 it's not township. It's.
Just leave it TBDs and.
Yeah.
We don't know.
Just take it on.
Leave it in, but they leave a TBD.
Yeah, that's what we did before. So then the last one on there, seek grant assistance for trail and park improvement projects. That's the Park Commission on the board.
Yep. We had TBD on the ORV, on the ORV trail and snowmobile trails.
Right, yep.
And then we also on hunting and fishing.
Fishing opportunities in the area. Because I know that one time was the tourist bureau did that, because L. Thompson used to run those things back.
He'd travel all over the state.
We were on snowmobile club here in the township.
Yeah.
They'll date when they help us promote the accessibility of the snowmobile trail. They, they make the snowmobile trail map and hand it out for.
Yeah.
I don't know the name of their, their snowmobile club.
I was thinking that, for some reason, I was thinking Indian River. Bert Lake Marina maybe was involved in that somewhat.
I don't know. I know they have a, for ten bucks, you can go to their parties and drink. That's all I know about it. They do have a snowmobile club, so.
Leave a TBD.
TBD is what, yeah. We don't know.
We don't know if they're doing promoting.
I know a lot of guys in there have snowmobiles that join. That's just a site. Okay. All right, so the last page. Continue to pursue implementation municipal sewer system to protect water quality, groundwater, surface water area. And we've got Township Board and Planning Commission? Is that something the Planning Commission? I guess we would. I don't know, is that something we would do? I know we went through that with Bob, so.
Since we don't have any zoning factor changes there.
So I'd just leave a Township Board, because they're working on this.
We don't really get into that.
No. I know Janet's deep into it right now. Okay, so we'll leave that Township Board. So work with Sheboygan County to encourage a land use pattern that is oriented to the natural features of water resources of the area by evaluating type of density of proposed development based on soil suitability, slope of land, potential groundwater and surface water degradation. I don't know.
That's really mostly county.
Then we had planning commission and county because I think that gets into, I think that gets into their zoning.
So we just leave a county then, then?
Well, it would be us and.
Us to pursue it to them? Okay.
If there needs to be.
Yeah, we would be the impetus to have them look into it.
Yeah.
Okay, so Township Planning Commission and County Planning Commission. Through public, through zoning and public education, encourage the maintenance of natural vegetation adjacent to lakes, streams, and wetlands.
BLPA.
Who's, I had CZ. I put CZ in.
County zoning.
Oh, county zoning, okay. We were in a hurry, because Beth was over there pushing us.
Because it is rezoning and public education, so I put the county.
Yeah, I would say BLPA and MAPS. I see if MAPS would have showed up that night, we could have asked them a question.
BLPA would be the education, the zoning is the county.
Okay. So we put BLPA slash County Planning Commission. Okay, we're getting down here, almost done. Support the strengthening of groundwater protection, stormwater management regulations by county zoning ordinance, which, again, that's county zoning. Wetlands and groundwater recharge, stormwater filtering, and stormwater holding areas. And that's county zoning. Number five, promote regulations for development of steeply sloped areas and required erosion control measures that construction is permitted. Acquire slope stabilization, revegetation, and distributed slopes for extraction areas. Again, that's county zoning. They would have to get the permits.
I almost think that falls under.
DNR?
The soil and erosion guys?
DNR.
Yeah.
Well, that would be the Eagle then.
Yeah.
All right, Eagle. With county zoning and Eagle, because they worked, we had some issues on our canal. We had both the county zoning and Eagle involved. Okay.
Probably county too.
Yeah, I got county zoning and Eagle.
And Eagle.
Yeah, because they worked together. In fact, Eagle took my tourist's suggestion on what the guy needed to do on our canal, so. Okay, encourage planting of native trees and shrub species when properties are developed. Again, is that the DNR?
BLPA for sure.
Why would BLPA, we don't get involved with that?
We are shoreline.
But it doesn't say shoreline.
True.
Same with the next one, encourage retention and management existing forest lands. The DNR, their management group that does the trees, or.
Also county zoning or something?
I don't know. I don't think county zoning is involved with the management of the forest.
Most of them want to rezone to some.
They kind of do. I mean, they kind of do. Like, we were required when we built our cottage to have either put a fence or a natural. Said we could put pine trees in a line in between the properties.
Okay, so we want to put DNR slash county zoning. Okay. Both of those on six and seven. Okay. Number eight, this was in red. Pursue grant funding to assist in protecting natural areas. We put tip of the met. Because they're the ones that pretty, are driving the lake, you know, the water, forty feet. What kind of, can't think of the name of that, what we call that. Greenbelt, the forty feet greenbelt, protecting the natural areas. And they, tip of the met is the one that gets in involved with that, with the state and with the funding. So we put tip on that, I remember. And we put tip on the last one. Encourage the use of conservation techniques, landscaping, conservation easement, and resource education programs. Protect water quality from developing impacts.
I mean, we did really talk too much to him about this, and, you know, some of it like this looks like it's something that probably LTC would be involved in, not necessarily, you know, local government or.
No, no, that's what I said. This is something the tip of the met. They do all the education. They do the, they have the programs. In fact, that one going now, they're having a meeting.
Conservancy, on that one would be conservancy, I would think, the LTC, the Little Traverse Conservancy.
No, they buy property.
Yeah, but they also do conservation stuff. I mean, they do educational things.
But to me, the tip is more educational than, they're the ones BLPA works with, with the tip. We've got a couple of our members on their board. And that with the Little Traverse, that's, they're more involved with buying properties and conserving properties, I guess.
Yeah, well, that's what this says.
Well, if you want to put tip in, you know.
Put them both.
Little Traverse, that's fine. That's not a big, it's the something we don't do. Let them have it. Okay. All right. So are we done looking at all those? Have we made any corrections that we had?
Once they make changes or answer our questions, then we get another draft thing back to work out.
Yes, we're going to have, yeah. Before I, yeah, before I leave this, there's a couple of things we need to get back from them. And I'm kind of disappointed with their involvement or response right now. Because I was looking at our last master plan, and I talked to Jane earlier, and I talked to Dawn about some of the things that we need to look at. But a lot of it is tied up with the goals and objectives in Chapter Six. So we do need to look at Chapter Five. Hopefully, we'll get that back. So we're going to have to have another meeting to look at Chapter Five. And hopefully, they'll have the update, the Chapters Four and Six to us. So we can review it all, and then hopefully, we can go on with the final draft after that. Well, I'm just, you seem to be the one that has. You know, I couldn't find that email that I got. Maybe Mike Ridley sent it to us about the four times they're coming here. I looked through all my emails about what they were going to do for us.
It's in the contract.
I got a copy of the contract, but it doesn't say, you know, the four dates that they were going to come.
I think they just said four meetings. They didn't say which dates.
Yeah, they said four meetings, but each meeting, they were going to tell us what they were going to redo. I know the last, they've already had three. And the last one is to go through the final master plan. And I think we're ways away from that. So.
Have they given us a new timeline when they're going to give us Chapter Five?
Well, we're going to have to. Dawn sent Denise an email yesterday. She turned it over to a guy to get, so we need to get back into it. I'll, I'll get ahold of the director, Doug, find out where they're at with this stuff.
That'd be the next logical step for us.
Yeah.
It'd be five.
Yeah, we go.
When we get five, we'll set a meeting time and then go.
Yeah, then we'll go, hopefully, they'll have six and four updated, so we can review that. And then when they come again, is when we go through the final process, is what I remember on the contract, or the four dates.
We can have more meetings. We just pay up to four.
Do you have to pay?
Yeah, we pay for more. We need to.
Their time and travel.
So, yeah, if, when we get the next items, we go through that, and we feel that we need another sit-down with them before they bring us the final package, then we'll make that decision at our next meeting. But it's all going to be predicated on when they get us the information back. So maybe a month or so, we'll set another meeting.
Is there a determination of how many chapters total we have, so we know where we're at?
Yeah, there is.
Is there a table of contents?
Because we had eight last night. Well, you were the one I was going to. You're my resource from last, you've been through two or three of these.
Okay, so, yeah, it's on the, it's actually on the contract. So Chapter One is the introduction. Two is socio-economic characteristics. Three is community facilities. Four is natural resources. Five is existing land use and land cover. Six is goals and objectives. Seven is future land use. Eight is implementation and adoption.
So we need to get five and seven?
We, yeah, right now, we're five, seven, and eight.
Probably what's taking them so long is because those are the ones that they really have to do.
Yeah. So she said upfront that they don't do them in order.
Okay, well, that's, okay, maybe I didn't read that follow-through. So we'll, I guess we'll wait and see what we get, and then we'll have another meeting. Then we'll determine whether we want to go to the meeting with them.
Five, seven, and eight.
Yeah. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay.
What about funding? Do we have adequate funding to even go and spend more money?
Um, we have money, yeah, because we'll be in next year's budget, I think. I would hope we got a little bit in there for, because I know they just billed five thousand dollars this year. But you guys had them send the money in early. You know, we had the sixteen thousand eight hundred budgeted for this year. And when we talked to them, they said, NUCO said they wouldn't have it ready for us till bill is till the next budget year. Well, then, I think Bob talked to them, and they gave us, he sent me a copy of the bill that I approved for five thousand dollars that they sent in this year. So, so we owe like eleven thousand dollars next year. And I think we put the whole sixteen in there. So we'd have to review that with you guys and see where we're at with another meeting with them. But I think we can put one in. What do they, what was the charge for a meeting? Remember what it said on there? Most of the money was.
It's four hundred and twenty-five per meeting.
Yeah, so four hundred and twenty-five bucks. Hopefully, we can round that up.
Plus travel, I think.
I think that includes the travel. Well, when we get through the next three chapters, we'll take a, we'll take a look and see where we're at. If we need another meeting with them, we'll talk to the board and see if we got the extra four twenty, whatever it is, that we can spend to go ahead and do this, so. Okay? So are we okay with Chapter Four and Six now?
Yep.
Okay.
Do we have to approve anything? Probably nothing tonight until they get.
No, not until we get them back. We just updated those, so. All right, we're going to go soon. All right. We're at public comments, and we didn't put on the, so is there any public comments? And who's?
I'll be quick this.
Go ahead, Jill.
We have all night tonight.
MAPS didn't show up tonight again. We had to kick the library board out of here, though. They had, it was double booked, I guess. They have it every, every Tuesday night. So it was somehow, that's kind of gets corrected on the calendar, because they had it at the same time we did, so.
And we're trying to get that.
Okay.
There was three different calendars.
I understand.
Working under, and we're trying to consolidate.
I understand, so it's, yeah. They were, you know, they were gracious enough, and they were done early, so we didn't have to fight them out. Okay.
Maybe because you don't have your other chapters yet, you can work on what I'm about to ask.
I know what you're going to ask. Go ahead.
Okay, so I want to know how many short-term rentals do we need? As of yesterday, in Indian River, we have one hundred and sixty-five Airbnb's, seven hundred and sixty-five verbos, one hundred and twenty-six homeaways, eighty-two cabins, I think it's cabin time, cabins. So imagine buying your first home in a coastal community, or even your dream home on the lake, and you're creating that peaceful backyard oasis. But when warm weather rolls around, you soon discover a revolving door at the house next door, loud music, loud drinking, late-night bonfires, extra people, overflowing garbage, boats, trailers, cars, RVs taking over the yard and the street, and lights. Let's talk about spotlights on all night long. There's no dark sky compliant, no star mazing for me. So I really think we need in this town some, to establish now, some rules and regulations for these short-term rentals at the local level, and address the issue of these rentals depleting the housing here for people to live and work here. There really are no long-term rentals here in Indian River. I know for a fact somebody's looking, and there just isn't any. I wish you could limit the number of SDRs in one area and pause any new ones, like other communities are doing at this time. The need is now to do this, not later. All I'm really asking for is, like, other communities, other Michigan towns have rules and regulations to rent, regulate these, like in Harbor Springs, and Charlevoix, and Wolverine has had rules for years now. So the master plan data results showed sixty percent of Indian River residents want some rules and ways to regulate these SDRs. So I'm asking you to please move forward now and establish an ordinance in our community.
Okay.
I was quick.
Now, wait a minute. Pat?
My name is Patrick McGinnis, and I've attended many of the township meetings. I've also listened as Bob Kramer, Jay Reesma, and Janet Vance has talked about how great of a job they are doing. I have watched as these three bragged about cutting budgets, redirecting funding, and how every dollar that they can trim from all of the township departments is a dollar that can be used on capital improvement projects. But from where I stand, it looks like the money they have cut from the budgets has been spent not on capital improvement projects, but on hiring new staff. Staff which was not needed in the past. Is this because these board members don't know how to do the job they were elected to do and have to hire people who know what they're doing? What is it now? Five new employees. Isn't this money that could be used to help fund the many capital improvement projects? I also understand that Jay Reesma is not in the office this week. Combine this with the week he took off to go skiing, taking the township credit card with him. Must be nice to be able to take so much time away from the office. I also stand, understand that Bob Kramer is out of the office this week. Must be nice. Why are we expected to believe that they are doing such a great job when they're never here? Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments? Beth?
I just wanna support that, Joe, with what she just said.
Okay.
I know you, you wanna do something, but she's correct. You know, it's time to do it. It's not way too long before it's out of control and you can't do nothing and then make them mad.
I don't wanna make anybody mad.
No, but I, I do think you guys need, and I know you've been working very, very hard on this tenure planning. You're doing a fabulous job.
Yeah, when it comes to board com, I got a couple of things to say when we get to the board comments. But again, is there any other public comments? Yes, sir.
My name's Joe Grundy. I know I spoke to you last week about my project on River Street with the condominiums. But I just still wanted to come anyways because I was in town and I never hardly ever get to come to any of these meetings.
Oh, welcome.
Hey, what can I say? On June 7th, the county, you know, Spoyden County zoning did partially approve my project with the exception of they want me to find three more dedicated spots, parking spots. So looking at all the alternatives right now, the best path of least resistance possibly is going to be, if you try to road abandonment of some of the right-of-way on River Street, on the north side of the road, there's only 10 parcels on that street of business district, business district or whatever. On my side, there's four. All four are in agreement to try to do this. What it would allow is 17 more feet on our property that we would gain back, assuming the township waives their rights and gives it back to the property owner. It would be replatted, re-surveyed. And then like in my case, I would gain all my parking I need on my actual property. Roger probably not gonna open back up, but he's fine gaining whatever space he's gonna gain. Same with the restaurant group. Larry and Patty probably just playing brass. So really, you know, time is always money when you're trying to build things and do things. In order for me to try to do this, in order to keep moving this summer and not lose all another summer, I need to get on their, the board next week. Hopefully, I can turn everything on Friday because it's really seven signatures from anybody in the township. Anybody that abuts that part of the right-of-way that we wanna ban it has to agree to it. We have their signatures, take it to the township, they do a resolution, vote on it. And if they say yes, then, then it goes to the road commission without a public hearing. And they vote on it. They can still say no. They say yes, then I have a project. And then the property owners then will take back, you know, that back. They will have that frontage to improve themselves. I wanted to do it for the whole street, but, you know, on the other side, maybe a couple maybes. Not sure what they wanna do. Obviously, I don't wanna, I'm trying to have anybody add more land, increase their taxes, obviously. You still need public parking, so you can still have public parking on that side. Essentially, on the north side, there would not be public parking, you know, in front of those residences for myself and Larry. Roger, you know, restaurant could either put their patio out front too if they want or they just have, you know, actual dedicated parking on their, on their property. So I just wanna let you know, obviously, that the DDA, you know, last night, just answer any questions you might have, concerns, small town, everybody offered that.
So when you say a resolution by the township board, is that to change the, you know, the right-of-way to make it like 66 feet instead of 120? That's a road commission approval? You don't need the planning commission or...
I don't need your, no, I don't need your approval.
No, no, I'm talking about the county because we're not, we're not part of this, unfortunately, we can't...
I need, I need the township to do a resolution. That's part of the abandonment process. The road commission will still have the final say.
So how long do you think this will take once you get the resolution?
Well, if I can get the signature, I have the signatures if I present it Friday and they can get it on June 29th and vote. And then I start the procedure with my lawyer, the road commission.
Yeah, because that's, to me, was the best way when we talked, just give a resolution to the road commission.
I'd love to see both sides done and then tie it all in with, you know, capital improvement money. You want that, you want that street to look like downtown. If it's your true business, if it is a business district type residential mixed-use, it'd be nice to see an L shape of just, you know, you have your downtown and then that is the street that should kinda look like downtown, too.
So we just finished granting a waiver. I mean, the in-between was granted a waiver for, because they didn't, that they didn't need parking because they have on-street parking. That's gonna go away.
It is?
Well, if he has them abandoned, yeah, it goes away and that's an issue. We're giving up our, because we, in the Village Center and the Village Center overlay, we have parking, certain parking restrictions.
Right.
We did that so that we have public parking. So you're taking away public parking. If you abandon the right-of-ways, that's the public parking that goes away. So we just finished granting a waiver to the in-between because they have on-street parking. I think if we go back and look at their plans, about 11 or 12...
Yeah, plus they have, for their people that, but he doesn't have a restaurant, though, as far as...
No, but for the fix for the restaurant, they needed X amount parking spaces.
Right, which they had in the front.
They had all down the front. They had 12 that was all the way down the street. Those are, that's on-street parking, public parking.
Right.
And then across the street as well, on Berkshire Hathaway's property, that's also on-street public parking.
It's a whole right-of-way.
So what he's saying, just the north side is what he's asking for the abandonment for the north?
So you just took away all the public parking that was on the north side of the road.
Let him answer what, what were you gonna say?
On the in-between, by, by code on their restaurant parking, they needed zero spaces, actually. They only needed one for the condos, hence why they bought across the street for the private spot.
But the zero that they needed was because they had on-street public parking and from, out front, all down that road.
So if you have the road abandonment and you take away all the public parking, that is going to make them have to comply. Where they're, they comply now, but Dawn's correct. Then they wouldn't be in compliance if you change to the abandonment and then they don't have any more public parking, then they're gonna have to, in, in their spot, in front, however many spots that they needed, they'll, they'll have to provide that on their own property.
Well, if they're gonna make that whole north side, you know, private...
No, it's gonna be private, so, so that means that Roger, that means that...
He might not have enough spaces right in front of his own building to make himself comply.
Roger could say, "I don't like your anymore, no parking." Berkshire Hathaway could say, "I don't like your anymore, no parking." I mean, seriously.
But on the site plan for the in-between, he had enough spots in front of his...
Because of the waiver. He got the waiver, so he did not. He got a waiver because they have public parking both sides of the road. So if, if it's abandoned, his waiver goes away.
That's correct.
And then it goes back to the code standards.
Have you worked with Jason and...
I didn't, I didn't see the waiver. I don't, I have to look for all of that. That's all public, right? It's like, like I said, the zoning code for the overlay for a restaurant is just zero spots.
Right, you don't need any spots.
So whether it's public or not, that doesn't, that's, to me, kinda ambiguous. I mean, if you're a restaurant, you're gonna park everywhere.
But if you, if you make that private, because it was all public parking on our streets, like the Village Center overlay district, the reason it was done, so you didn't have to provide parking for people because the restaurant, the businesses were so close together. And the county, you know, they're the ones that came, came to us with that ordinance because of our buildings are so close together. So it made all the streets in that area open to anybody for public parking. We did that six, seven years ago. So I don't know what that's gonna do to that or now. I mean, that's something that's gonna have to work out.
This is something that we've been talking about. We've talked about here in the planning commission, we've talked about it at board meetings. We have an issue with public parking in this township.
Well, we're trying to resolve that, you know, at this point.
Well, taking it away, it's not gonna resolve.
Well, I think right now, it's gotta be handled between the county planning and the road commission with them to figure it out. We gave our opinions on, you know, his restaurant or his thing and, you know, they'll have to take another look at it. I mean, we can be in contact with Mike, but I'm sure you're working with the county.
I can do it just on my own property. I have by right to do it just on my own right-of-way and I have the, the few people that abut to me agreement. So I could just do my own and be done. I just, and that's fine. You know, I save my project or, you know, I have my own parking. I was only trying to make the entire street look better because what they have is the right-of-way right now. If you wanna come outside and go look with me, it's, it's not really a safe right-of-way.
No, I understand that. You know, it's, for some reason, it's been that way for 50 years or so. It's just been the same way with the street over, Lake Street, you know, it's really that way.
You know, whether mine are first, you know, whether they own it for a year-round or a second home, I just want them to deal a part break.
No, I understand. I, you know, I think that's something that...
I could see, I could see it in, in front of the residential homes. I could see if they wanna do it in front of the residential area, but not in the business district.
Well, okay, so in the business district, you have 10 parcels. You have nine owners because they have two, so there is, there's four. So, yeah, you could go like this if you want or just, you know, it's just kinda, it would look better if it's all whoo one way. But if it's just me or if it's case by case, you know, that's fine. I was just trying to, I have no choice. I have no, nothing to lose, everything to gain. You know, I've invested money a year ago. Obviously, I'm still here fighting to try to even have a project. Shorter me buying properties that aren't even on the market right now to gain private parking, you know, this is my only option.
No, I understand. I mean, you, like I said, you have to work it out through the road commission and you get an agreement or a resolution from the township board, you know, to go forward with that through them. And then they have to work it out with the zoning. Long as it meets the county zoning, then, you know, there's no issue. Like I said, our only issue was at the time, when your site plan went through, was the parking.
Oh, yeah.
And that's...
Well, it's a great problem to have for Indian Rivers, you know, I'm thinking too.
Well, we know that. I can tell you right now that...
I've been coming up here every, every year since I was a baby.
Yeah.
So I know the days that are slow. I know the weekends that are busy. I understand it, so...
But I know it's been a big issue. I know the township board's been looking at it as part of the capital improvement plan and look for, trying to find more parking like next to your house and other places, you know. It's, it's been a real problem, especially the last two years or so. Everybody's discovered Indian River and we got more and more people here, so.
It's gonna get worse. It's...
Yeah, so we got, it's a real issue here that's gotta be addressed by both the township and the county, so, okay.
Like the worst thing that you can do is not plan for public parking.
Yeah, well, that's something we gotta work on, you know. Okay.
Just thank you for your time.
That's, that's okay, Joe. Thank you for explaining it to us, so.
No problem.
Is there any other public comments?
The only thing I'd like to follow up with that, you know, and I obviously can't speak and won't speak for the board and the board needs to basically stay neutral in this. But I think all of us would be remiss if we let a $5 or $6 million development go south over three parking places. The DDA yesterday agreed to sign on to the parking lot concept next to your house. They didn't make a commitment dollar-wise, but they did give the full board their approval to go forward and investigate the actual dollars for the 23-space parking lot that's basically at the corner of Martham Club, including a sidewalk access and easement to go from the parking lot, also matching the street lighting to the street scape that's existing. So there's 23 spaces that are, hopefully, cross your fingers, likely going to happen. I am sympathetic to the concerns. That street and Lake Street is a little bit of an anomaly because it is over 100 wide. So even after you take the 17 out, it's still wider than the 66 feet that most of the rest of the little village district streets are. But ultimately, it is up to the road commission and to the full board, so...
The thing that would happen, they would have to negate some of the overlay district. Because right now, because that's in the overlay district and it's all public parking, like you had brought up. So somehow, the county planning commission is gonna have to change some of the, the rules on the, especially that area.
And, and, you know, planning has already made a big concession here.
Yeah, so...
They've, they've cut their requirements in half from 18 down to nine. So, but as far as the, and again, I don't, you would think that if Jason's group objected, that they would object and not sign on. To Dawn, to your comments, I would think that they would then just use the same spots that they have now and continue to use them for parking, even though they might be, they could obviously restrict it to their own parking, so.
But they had, there has to be a change in the overlay law or the ordinance then, if that's gonna happen. Which it could, it can happen. I'm not saying, because you're right, those two streets, for some reason, are unbeliev... I didn't realize that till about three or four years ago, especially when you guys were putting in the condos where you can't park, you know.
34 feet wider than everywhere else, those 17 aside.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, anybody else, public comments? Okay, just to address your short-term rental thing. I know there's some concern right now. We're not Traverse City, we're not Petoskey, we're not Boyd City. We don't have the, the staff to write ordinance with that. I know the attorney that we have in this township, I think I brought this up before, and the lady that does our, the NIMCOG, they both have written ordinances on short-term rentals. I know the board is looking at this. They're very concerned about short-term rentals. I've had some conversations with Mr. Kramer. He's got some ideas. He and I talked on the phone about, you know, quick, I wanna say short-term solutions, but there are some things that we might be able to do without trying to write an ordinance. It's gonna take years, let me tell you. With courts and everything else, and these people, I hate to tell you. Just talk, well, I'm just, on you, Jill, it's not something that we, as a planning commission, the part-time people that don't get paid...
Wolverine's had years, they're right up the street.
I know where they're at. I have them on my street, too. I have them on my street, too. And with Burleg Preservation, it came out with is, it's a good neighbor policy. You talk to the neighbors and then there is leverage that you can have. And like I said, I've talked to Mr. Kramer about it. He's concerned about it and there's things that, you know, that he's looking into, too, with short-term rentals. Because we're, it's becoming a real problem. Go on Burleg Buddies. I think every other post on there is, "I got a place to rent. You don't wanna rent my place?" And it looks like you said, how many, that's over 1,000.
How many you need?
Yeah, I'm just saying is that, you know, the other thing is that I, I know that you can cross-reference the, the tax rules against Verba and, what's the other one? Airbnb and people that get the Homestead Act for their houses. There's ways you can use that leverage, too, with people.
Yeah, a lot of them are doing that and nobody's...
But there is, there's a way that you could cross-reference that, too. And, you know, without trying to write...
Are they cross harving?
You can do that. It's been done.
I have to and they're done taxing me. Is this over, or we go?
Yeah, you can go, Joe. Get on, stay, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Yep, take care.
But I know it's been looked into and I'm just saying is, it's not something that's gonna be put under the rug. You know, I know Janet and I, Bob, looked at a few things a few weeks ago. And there's things that can be done and it's, it can be done. I know you want it done right away, but it's not gonna get done overnight.
Just before it's too late, then you won't have any power to do anything.
Well, it's gonna become an uproar. I mean, it's gonna become a major problem with more than just you and a couple of people. It's gotta be, you know, a groundswell with the people. And that's what happened in Petoskey, that's what happened in Boyd City.
60%, that's over 50% of people here.
Yeah, but they put that on a survey.
You don't understand how close these are altogether. They need to be limited. I have two across the street and four behind me. I'm talking directly. This is, you know, my way of life is gone, you know. All, all it is is short-term rentals, you know, and they're, and that's just my little area because I'm close to the lake. They're all close to the lake or they're on the lake.
Well, it's like that all over. And I don't know right now what a quick solution is.
But people are limiting them and putting a pause on them in townships just right now.
Yeah, but those townships are, they have a full, you know, the cities do that.
I think it's important because this town isn't gonna be the same.
We know that.
You have no one that can live here and work here.
So can I say, Denise did, Denise did talk to us about Preskill Township. Now, I don't know if any of you guys are familiar with Preskill Township. I'm very familiar. I owned a home in Preskill Township for, I don't know, 15 years. They sat down, it's a, it's a one-horse town.
They sat down, it's a, it's a one-horse town, I'm not kidding you, there's, there are like three buildings in the town. It's all, it's all around Grand Lake, and they, she sat down with a group of residents and a group of short-term home rental operators, and they hammered out.
Well, that's what we need to do here. That's something we need to do here, and like I said, I've talked to, I've talked to our supervisor, and that's, that's one area we can go, set, set people down to look at, without trying to go through, writing an ordinance, which is going to take you years to get done, at least two or three years.
They have to pay for enforcement, too.
Yeah.
Well, other towns have done it, though. My town in Milford, Ohio, we got together, and we actually have owner occupied there, where you have to live in your rental to actually have one. And it's a very small town, I'm going to call it Lake Mayberry, and that's my town, and we have kept it like Mayberry, because we got together, and they did put an ordinance just together, just quickly. It really wasn't any big deal, you know, you've got all kinds of ordinances everywhere to look at, you know, to base.
No, I know, we've looked at them, we started looking at them.
So I don't understand why you just.
No, I did some research last year, I know.
Anything, any rule?
My tourist was sending me stuff, I mean, they're, they're researching, they've been researching at county level, so it's not just here, it's everywhere, there's a lot of places in this town.
See, the county doesn't want to get involved, their statement is, it's a township problem, not the county problem.
Yeah, that's why I said that you guys are the ones that charge the local.
I understand that, but again.
You know, so you're the ones that can do something.
It's something we're trying to do.
For the future of this river.
No, no, I understand.
Fabric of the neighborhoods here, because you have people like me selling, and not, you know, and not bringing up.
I'm just, you know, we're not, we're not ignoring you, we're looking at, doing something about it. And, go ahead, you can speak now.
Would it have to be a petition drive, or something, whatever, like how they did the sewer, where she has to get 51% of the people? Would that make it?
No, I don't think that, that matters.
I did that already, I did it in Atlanta.
No, we, we realized there's a problem.
Yeah.
So there's, there's no need to do any more petitions or anything like that.
Yeah, just look at, just look at the internet.
This is going to be taken care of, just not at the speed that she wants it taken care of.
Okay, I was just asking.
There's something going to be done within the next, I would hope, the next year, whether it's sitting down with both the owners, you know, the town, having a town hall meeting, bringing in the short-term rental people that rent, plus the township people, and hammer something out, like you said with.
Find out if you're a homesteader.
Huh?
First thing you guys need to do, not you personally, but would it that be the assessor? Find out if you're a homesteader.
Yes, sir, assessor.
The assessor of the township.
We're looking into that, or.
Wait, wait, wait.
We're dealing with property. We're getting the names of all the Verbo and the short-term rental people, we're comparing them with the homesteads, and all that kind of stuff, and we're, we're already on that issue.
That's already, yeah, I was with them, and they were going back and talking to the assessor about it.
Well, they do now, Joe, and I would be more than happy to help them.
Well, I can just say that, let it, let it go through at the, at the rate that it's going through, we have to get through this master plan, we've talked about it before. When the master plan is done, then we'll start to address the next thing.
And I think if we can come up with a quick solution, abandoning, until we can come up with an ordinance, to at least get both sides together, and I know Mr. Kramer is, is, you know, looking into that, too, suggesting, because he's talked to you a few times, he's talked to other couple here the last time about the garbage and everything, so it's, it's a concern, and we're not.
The garbage is still there, by the way, on the street.
And that, and that should be taken care of. If, if I can get a late restriction on my property for 30 days, it happened on May 25th, I have 30 days to clean up my stuff.
Okay.
Okay? So they have 30 days, so if they, if they've given them, if the police went there and observed the trash, they have 30 days. And then at the 30-day point, then you start getting fines.
What she was talking about is how they're keeping the receptacles on the street, you know, that's where they're keeping them, that's what we're talking about. All of us have our garbage out just for one day.
No, I understand, yeah.
But there's rows sitting out, and there's.
Well, that's where they need to, have somebody put it back for them. My next-door neighbor, they don't rent, but they.
Because they don't live there.
All right.
I've got one.
Well, go ahead.
One comment. Not on short-term rentals, but then on the, our CIT.
Yeah.
The number one item on our CIT were the steps down to the river.
Yeah.
And I checked with Doug shortly before the meeting to see what the status was on that, and he keeps calling the guy, and he hasn't gotten any, any work back.
I left a message for them today.
Okay, but I mean, there's no work started yet.
That's going to be a real issue, people.
No, no confirmation that we're on the schedule. But again, we've not, Doug's been the only point of contact up until now. That changed today.
Okay, well, it's, I just wanted to.
I have a comment on that, too. We did send Doug down there a week ago, maybe a little longer than that, and he graded it all, and made it more safe, if people didn't want to come up the hill, they're just walking up, there's not like big holes or, or things like that for them to fall in. So he did work on that to try and make it a safer if they chose to walk up. If they walk up on the in-between property, we have no jurisdiction on that side of the fence, but on our side, he did try to fix it up a little bit, so it would be safer to walk on, and we are trying to get ahold of the contractor to get them in here, you